Four, three, two, one. You're live.
Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, being conducted at the Ashland Town Hall, second floor Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. The agenda has a link to connect to the Zoom meeting, and there's also a telephone number to dial in if you wish to do that. First order of business is to call the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Brian Forrestall, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present on Zoom.
Excellent. All members are present and recorded. Next item on the agenda is election of officers pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 12. Each zoning board of appeals shall elect annually a chairman from its own number and a clerk. Because the terms of our officers start on September 1st, our first September meeting is when we... Is there an echo that I'm hearing? Thank you. At our first meeting in September, we will... We conduct that election so that we can proceed forward. First item, the officers must be a member. Associate members cannot be officers, but associate members are eligible to vote for the positions. First order of business would be the position of chairman.
I make a motion, John remains the chairman?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Stu. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Next item is for the position of clerk, and I nominate Brian Forrestall for that position.
I second that motion.
Okay. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. We look forward to a good year. It certainly will be a busy one, starting out at least. Third item on the agenda is continuance of the public hearing for a special permit request at 24 Pinecrest Lane. This matter was on for a hearing on August 26, 2025. The applicants and their representative made a presentation. Questions were asked by the board members and by the public comment, and we had an email that had come in from our conservation agent the day before, raising an issue concerning a vinyl fence that extended into property beyond the applicant's property line. There was some confusion as to whether that was conservation land, and we continued the matter till today. We subsequently received an email from the conservation agent, Becca Solomon, who advised that, in addition to her role as conservation agent, she is... has a position where she oversees property owned by the town, and that the vinyl fence in question extending into the property was not extending into conservation land, but rather was extending into the town property. It was not placed there by the applicants. It is not part of their plan for which they are seeking relief before the board. So I would suggest to my fellow board members that we can continue on with the hearing, if that is all right with everybody. Okay, I see Mr. Gowdy, I believe, is present on Zoom. He was the applicant's representative.
Correct, I'm here.
Board members, any reason why we shouldn't close the hearing and enter into deliberations on the applicant's request for a special permit for a non-conforming property?
I don't see any reason.
Okay. Brian, why don't you go first with the deliberation? I think you had spoken the last time, at the hearing the last time, that it seemed to be in order and didn't seem to create any further problems with the neighborhood, et cetera.
Yeah, what I said is normally I wouldn't approve it if the deck being setback was against someone else's home, but since it's on open space, the little bit of open space between the neighborhoods, I don't think it's a problem. So I see no reason why we can't move this along.
Okay. Stu, your thoughts?
I concur with Brian's assessment, and I also don't have any issues with the petition.
Okay. And Ryan, how about you?
I don't have any issues with petition, especially following the explanation as to the setup for the deck. So I'm good.
Okay. And I would concur. I think it was located in the neighborhood, and it's perfectly all right where it's extending into, and because it's not going into property, but going into undeveloped land, it doesn't impact the neighbors at all. So I also would vote in favor to grant the special permit. I think we can certainly find that it meets the criteria of non-conforming use, property extension, which I'm searching for the statute language. But Jasmine, I think we can put the statutory language in there for that. And I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of granting the special permit.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Stu, do you want to be the next one up on this?
Say again?
Did you want to be the third voting member on this one?
At your choice, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Stu, why don't you step up?
Okay.
Okay, so vote is three to nothing. One question I do have, on the application, it lists the applicant's name in one spot as Dan and Sasha Katz. It's signed by Sasha Murphy, but typed as the owner's name Sasha Katz Murphy, and I also believe there's a Daniel Murphy. So we need, I think, have the names correct for the decision. So...
Yeah, it's Daniel and Sasha Murphy. Katz is her maiden name. The house was in her name when we bought it in 2020.
Very good. We just wanted to make sure, because this should be filed at the Registry of Deeds, and we wanted to make sure we had the proper names of the people getting the special permit.
Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations, people. The decision will be prepared. We will sign it, or actually, we generally wait until the next meeting to review the decision, and then we sign it. So we'll approve the language in the decision. Jasmine will draft it, and we will then proceed from there to sign it, and you will be all set. Normally, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. However, the next scheduled meeting date would be September 23rd, which is Rosh Shoshana. Town school system is closed, and out of respect for the holy day, we will not be meeting on that date. We will instead meet on the following Tuesday, September 30th. That will all be posted on our website, but just to give you folks a heads up. Very good. That takes care of item number three of the agenda. And going on to item number four, which is the continuance of a public hearing involving 30 Memorial Drive, a variance request. This matter was on for the hearing opening on August 26, 2025. A presentation was made by the applicant, and the matter was continued today, as some questions were... had arisen about the... about what was being requested and what was properly before the ZBA. And before we invite the applicant to make a further presentation, I wanted to just address my fellow board members, because at last month's... or last meetings, rather, hearing, I think I allowed the discussion to get off focus for what was properly before the board. This is a project that is before both the Planning Board and also the Zoning Board of Appeals. Typically, with most developments that we have, the project either is before the Planning Board, or it's before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and not both. In this instance, they're before not only the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, but also before the Conservation Commission. But focusing on what they are seeking from us, the only issue before us for decision is their request for a variance to reduce the size of parking spaces. The Ashland zoning bylaw provides that parking spaces should be nine feet by 20 feet. And what they are seeking, the applicant is seeking, is a variance to allow for a nine-by-18-foot parking space. And that being said, there were some questions raised at the last meeting about location of handicap parking spaces, location where other vehicles, larger vehicles would park, whether the fire department trucks had enough room to go through, et cetera. And I would respectfully submit to my fellow board members that those are issues properly before the Planning Board and not before us as the ZBA for the variance request. We did receive from the Planning Department, it was sent late this afternoon, an email from the applicant, which was a two-page memorandum from their traffic consultant, MDM Transportation Consultants, Incorporated, appeared to be initialed by Robert J. Micho, their managing principal, addressing the issue of nine-feet-by-18-feet parking spaces and what the standard is nationally, notwithstanding what the zoning bylaw provides in Ashland. I hope all of us had an opportunity to read the report, but at this point, I will turn it over to the applicant's counsel, I believe, and let him address the issue.
One second. Take two. Once again, good evenings, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Matt Echol with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. In the room with us tonight, we have Rick and Peter from the YMCA. We also have a collection of our team on remotely if there are any further questions. Mr. Chairman, thank you. That was a nice summary of our last hearing and what we're seeking. I think Jasmine's trying to pull up the presentation, but... Okay, well, I'll continue, and certainly if we need any further information from the presentation, we can share it. But as mentioned, we are seeking relief to have nine-by-18 parking spaces. I think we went into great detail, the justification for the variance here, that I'll briefly address once again, and we can get into further detail if the board would like, but we did walk through it, as I said, in great detail. But this site does present a few different challenges. First and foremost is the topography. Looking at the site plan on the screen right now towards the rear of the building, we are facing a significant topographical change from the back of the building going down. We also have a topographical change on the left side off to the parking area to the left of the Early Learning Center. So we have topographical issues. We also have, as you can see, a significant jog from right to left on the property line, which is about... doesn't... this image here does not show the full property, but it's about a fifth of the way back on the property. This is obviously a very deep property, and that jog that kind of goes right behind the building, along with the topography, really influenced the building, the site design, the parking, the turning radius. Everything you see there is kind of influenced by those two conditions. So the topography and the shape of the site certainly make this a very unique lot. In this case, a literal enforcement of the code would provide a substantial hardship. The goal here is obvious to provide a safe, efficient site, circulation for pedestrians and vehicles and the like. And by designing it with a nine-by-18 parking spaces, we're able to maximize other things like pedestrian walkways, future solar canopies, things of that nature, while also providing a maximum amount of parking in a minimal amount of impervious area. Finally, there is... we don't believe any public detriment to this. As the memo submitted by MDM asserts, these are industry-standard spaces. They're common throughout Ashland and throughout the Commonwealth. They can certainly be accessed by all types of vehicles. We have the two-foot overhang leading to some of the sidewalks in many areas, which still provides ample sidewalk width for full accessibility. So there really is no detriment. If anything, there are benefits to this. Again, it's reducing impervious area. It's allowing the maximization of landscaping areas, of trees as visual buffers, of stormwater management, it just on and on and on. The less pavement, the less impervious area, the better for the project and the better for the environment and the community. So we don't think there's any public judgment. Rather, there's a number of benefits from this proposal. Just to briefly walk through the site again, overall, it's about 12 and a half acre site. The majority of the work here that you're seeing is towards the front of the site. We have a Early Learning Center, which is going to be approximately 9,500 square feet, and we have the Membership Building, which is just around 62,000 square feet. Overall, we have the two parking courts, one to the left to the Early Learning Center, which has accessible parking and direct access, and we also have the majority of the parking in front of the Membership Building there, which you can see on the screen. A few of the specific questions that we received, which we'd like to address, the first related to, you know, where else in Ashland is this a existing condition? Although variances don't typically take into account precedent, they're supposed to be looked at on an individual basis. We did try to do our homework and came up with a number of examples where this exists everywhere from the Town Hall parking lot here to the Ashland commuter rail station, to Starbucks, to CVS, a mixture of, you know, commercial, municipal buildings, residential developments. It's very prevalent throughout the town. And again, although it's not necessary to have precedent to grant a variance, this is not creating some kind of slippery slope because it's granted. It's common throughout Ashland, and again, the Commonwealth as a whole. I would also add that the Metro West YMCA in Framingham, which I believe was specifically asked, also has nine-by-18 parking... sized parking spaces. They have operated over there for a number of years safely, efficiently. It's certainly... there's no clear... more clear-cut example of that this works. The functionality and the operations will be very similar to that location, and the parking is proposed to be the same as well. As mentioned, we did submit that memo, which hopefully the board members were able to take a look at. I'm happy to talk about that, or Dan online can talk further if there's any questions. But again, that just asserts that this is a fairly standard parking space in industry terms.
Thank you. Questions from the board members? Brian, any questions? I'm all set with that explanation. Okay. Stu?
No questions.
And Ryan, any questions?
Well, lighter than memo and the explanation, no questions for me.
Okay. I found the memo to be particularly helpful in setting forth what the industry standards are, which is what you're seeking, the parking spaces to be, nine-by-18. But I also found of significance that the pathway between the travel aisle, the travel aisle is 24 feet, which should be adequate size with a nine-by-18 parking space for people to pull in and out without difficulty. I have no further questions, but I commend you for getting the memorandum to us, because I think it answered a lot of the questions that we had a concern. This is the first time I can recall our receiving a variance request for parking space size. So it was very helpful. That being said, we had public comment at the hearing last week. Do we want to open it up for public comment again, or... Wouldn't hurt. Okay. If there's anybody either here in person or on Zoom that wishes to be heard, if you're here in person, step up to the wall there, and if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. Okay, nobody's standing up in the wall, so the wall is clear, but there's somebody on Zoom. So if you would state your name and address, that would be appreciated.
Howard Kogan, 4 Series Drive in Ashland. Is it appropriate to talk about the matter of traffic?
No, this is a variance where we're only dealing with the size of the parking space. They're requesting a nine-by-18 parking space instead of a 10-by-20 parking space. So the number of the traffic, et cetera, is not something that we, the ZBA, can consider or will be considering. The Planning Board, which, my understanding is, has not opened its hearing yet on this project, will have traffic in its consideration, and if you have concerns about traffic, that would be where you should let them be known.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. And we have somebody stepping up to the mic, so if you'd identify name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Deb Weekly, President's Row. I understand that there is approximately 265 parking spaces that are going in, if I'm correct?
There are number 200 and...
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Does this affect the number of parking spaces? Will it increase it? Because that's a large amount already.
The plan that was filed for 206 to spaces had the spaces sized at nine-by-18. So they're requesting us to waive the 10-by-20 space. We're not increasing the number of spaces that the original plans that they filed have. If that's... I don't... I didn't... wasn't terribly eloquent with that explanation. We'll see if we can try it again.
Has the space decreased or increased?
No, they're staying the exact same as they were in the plans, because the plan showed spaces as nine-by-18 and not nine-by-20.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will close public comment. And a motion to close the hearing and enter into deliberations?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of closing the hearing.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Okay, well, now let's enter into deliberations. Three members are... will be voting members in this matter. The two full members, Brian and myself, and we need a third. We typically rotate amongst the associate members, so Ryan, you would be next up if you're willing to serve as a decision-maker on this matter?
Sure.
I will go first. Typically, we don't grant variances. They're difficult to grant. I think in this instance, the applicant has met the requirements of the topographical issues that require spaces to be put in a certain spot. The nine-by-18 space seems to be an industry-standard space now. Ashland zoning requires a little bit more, but it seems as though nine-by-18 is the industry standard. I did a little research myself this afternoon and Googled parking space sizes, and lo and behold, a number of publications said nine-by-18 is the current standard. So not that that's any expert. I'm very thankful that we have a report from an expert on that, but it certainly does confirm what MDM has found. I would be in favor of approving the variance.
I also would approve the variance.
And Brian?
I would also be in favor of the variance for the reasons you've stated, and given the interesting lot here.
Okay, then we will need a motion to approve the variance as requested.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Very good. Thank you. That concludes the matter, I think. You have your variance. The hearing will be... the decision will be written. It'll be back before us on the 30th for review and then signature, and you will then be done with the ZBA.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time and consideration on this.
And good luck with the Planning Department, or the Planning Board, rather, excuse me.
Thank you very much.
And speaking of the Planning Board, once again, I've been consistent in failing to identify who's sitting with us this evening. We have our town planner and director of development, Jasmine Farinachi. I will get it right eventually, and also our counsel, Brian Winter. Okay, next item on the agenda is 55 West Union Street. This is a 40B comprehensive permit request, a continuance of a public hearing that was opened at our last meeting and continued to this evening because the applicants were not able to be present at the last meeting. Hi, welcome. If you'd just be kind enough to introduce yourself before we get underway?
Sure. I'm Lynn Sweet with LDS Consulting Group, based in Wellesley, Massachusetts. The 40B consultant on this project. Really excited to be here. I do need permission to share my screen, however.
Okay, but before we get started, I want to acknowledge that you were kind enough to grant the ZBA an extension of time in which to open the hearing, and we appreciate that cooperation. What we would like to do this evening is to have a brief, not comprehensive presentation of your project, because there are a number of hearings that we're going to be having going forward. We will have to vote on peer review hirings at the end of the presentation, but I think it would be helpful if you could give us an overview of what your project is. We'll have some public comment, limited hopefully, because we know there will be other hearings when we will more specifically address traffic, engineering, et cetera. And I hope that meets with your approval.
Yes, we do have our whole team here, who I'd like to introduce.
That would be fine.
We do have a presentation that briefly goes over the project and each discipline, if you will allow us the time to do the presentation.
That would be fine.
And we look forward to, you know, providing a deposit for the peer reviews and future meetings where we really delve into more... future meetings where we really delve into more substance.
Sounds good. So the floor is yours.
Awesome. So I just quickly want each of our team members to stand up and say hello, so you can kind of, kind of put a face to a name.
For the record, Paul Haverty, Blatman Babrowski, Haverty and Silverstein, I'm the attorney for the applicant.
I'm Jason Scudiel, with the Arctic Rhythm. I'm sorry, when you stand up, could you please go to the podium?
Yeah, people are going to have to stand at the, the microphone, so it might be easier if you could just identify, have them stand up and you can identify them, rather than have everybody come up to the microphone. It's up to you, but...
Sorry, Studio...
We're going to be here all night if we have three or 10 people coming over.
Sorry, Jason Scudiel from Studio Can, Daniel Lassavita from Vaness and Associates, and...
We can stand up and, so we can see them at least, but that's fine.
Sorry, Jason.
There you go. Okay, now we're getting...
And Vito Colonia from our civil engineer and, and the developer, whom many of you probably know, John Dudley, and...
We do want him to stand up and get some Zoom time.
Julia from his office as well. So, so this just illustrates who, who you've just met. We're excited about our team, a very experienced team that's worked together on other 40B developments. And so this is just a quick overview of kind of, you know, where we've been. We went through the project eligibility process. I think the board is very familiar with that, where this is not the first 40B in front of you. We did have a site walk. We did get some comments in from the town, and a lot of those comments, we feel that we've been able to address as we've advanced our plans. And you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. And we filed for the 40B on, I'm sorry, we filed for the 40B a little while ago, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at that date, and that date is not feeling, feeling exactly right to me. Yeah, well, that's right, we did file on July 8th, and we did file, we, we did grant you an extension, so I'm like looking at that. So this slide is just to basically say that when we filed our application, the town at that particular point in time had not met its 10% affordability requirement. And basically, this is, you know, kind of, kind of the process here. So, you know, for those in the audience not familiar with 40Bs, this is an initial, also an initial step in the process. This is when the public has time to learn about the project, the zoning board of appeals has time to ask questions, they will hire peer reviewers at the developer's expense to review certain aspects of the project. And even once the, if and when a comprehensive permit does issue, the developer's work is not done, they're going to need to go in front of the conservation commission, and they are going to need to go back to Mass Housing, who is the subsidizing agency, and get their financing and put in place a long-term affordability restriction prior to getting a building port, permit. This is just a very long way of saying, you know, we're early on, we're open to ideas and subject, suggestions. We believe that the comprehensive permit hearing process always adds value to a project. This slide is basically telling you again something you may not know, which is that there is not only a local need in Ashland for affordable housing, there is also a need for affordable housing regionally. And this just goes to the standard and the findings that we're asking the board to make, that the regional need for affordable housing outweighs local concerns. So with regard to this particular project, we are, we have applied for 25% of the units to be income restricted to 80% of area median income. We hope to support, and that you will support, and the state will support, that 70% of those affordable units will have a local preference, if approved by Mass Housing, the subsidizing agency. This means that anybody living, working, or having a school-aged child in Ashland essentially gets two bites of the apple for the affordable units. They go into a local pool and they go into a preference pool. All of the units will be affordable in perpetuity, meaning that they will never go away. We, the affordable units will, will have no distinction when you're looking at the units outside or inside, they'll be the same as the market rate units, and that the project will be owned and managed by a local company. We think that's really important. You want somebody local to answer the phone. And the same thing with the lottery plan, when the units are first put up for lease for the affordable units, that will be using a local company, and they will be staying in place to handle all of the yearly certifications and the reporting to the state and to the So quickly getting into the development overview, what we are proposing to you is 116 rental units in one four-story building. It's, it jogs, you know, you'll see that in a minute. The majority of our units are one-bedroom units, that is where, because that is where the market is going, quite frankly. And to a lesser degree, we have two- and three-bedroom units. We are meeting the state's requirement that 10% of the units be three-bedroom units. You'll see on the plans, we're hoping to keep as much of the tree buffer around the site as possible. Since these are going to be elevator units, all units will be visitable, and we will meet accessibility requirements. And we have put on-site less kind of community amenities than you might see in larger developments. And this is because the site is in such an ideal location that it's walkable to the schools. We're hoping that the Y is going to be built, so we'll have a smaller fitness center. We're near walking trails, which we think is terrific, and we will have ample bike storage, because again, we're near those sidewalks and walking trails, very close to the T. So we're hoping that, you know, the need for cars will, will be less, and the need to put on-site amenities will be less, because there's fields down the street, trails down the street, fitness across the street. All of the lighting will be dark sky compliant. We didn't include our lighting plan tonight, but we certainly can bring it up at some point in the future. And we have a ratio of 1.59 parking spaces per unit. We feel that that's the right amount, because again, we are targeting smaller units. And so now I am going to turn this over to our, to Vito. So you can just hit, hit the down arrow here? Okay.
Okay, Vito Colona, I'm with Connor Stone Engineering, civil engineer for the project. On the screen is just the existing conditions plan, briefly run through that, keep it fairly brief. So right now, this is on the corner of Memorial and West Union. Duncan Owens is right on the kind of corner right there. It's generally wooded and undeveloped right now. Kind of sloping topography is a peak in the middle, slopes down to West Union in the front and down to the rear. There's a wetland in the back. It was delineated by Welland Consultant and would eventually get reviewed by the conservation commission. There's a few items on-site right now. There is a cross-country sewer easement, that's kind of that triangular shaped path that runs through the middle. It holds a 10-inch sewer main that goes through the site. Oh, sorry about that. And then there's also a slope easement right along the edge of the roadway that just allowed for maintenance and the construction of the road at the time, to do the shoulder work. And then also, right down at the intersection, there is another easement, utility easement that houses a underground infiltration system that takes drainage off of Memorial Drive. So I'll just switch to the existing that proposed. And so this is the proposed conditions. Center of the building in the central portion of the site, it would house 116 units. The footprint of the building is just over 30,000 square feet, square footage and footprint. And we've kind of set the building to work with the topography, so it steps down to a level that works with the topography a little bit, rather than just, you know, work against it and to reduce that earthwork on the site. So up on the left-hand side, that's kind of at a higher elevation, and the right-hand side, as it slopes down, it steps down a level, and it would be underneath. The driveway itself, we've designed to loop around the building, give circulation for both the residents of the building, but also for emergency vehicles. We've checked the path, turning path movements for the largest truck of the Ashland Fire Department, and it's able to maneuver freely through that parking lot and loop through, back through and around and out. The locations of the driveways were selected to maximize the site distance. I'm sure traffic might expand upon that just a little bit, but the left driveway, on the screen anyway, was set really at the high point of the road, so you can see in both directions, to the maximum extent practical. As Lynn said, we have 184 parking spaces, and we spread those throughout and dispersed those evenly around the building, and provide the required handicap spaces and accessible paths and walkways to all the required doorways. There is a loading area off to the front that would take care of all the trash and the loading that would be required for the building. And then just briefly on the utilities, the sewer main that we noted on that existing conditions plan would get rerouted around the building with a new sewer easement to be granted to go along with that. So it would route around the back of the building, and that would also allow our connection from the building into that new sewer line. Water is available out in both streets, there's a 12-inch main out on Memorial Drive. We, right now, currently show a single connection with fire protection. DPW has asked us to loop that, and that's something we will have on some future revisions and plans, once we have all the comments collected. So we will be able to loop that around, and Fire has also provided input on hydrant locations that they'd like to see, and we'll add that into the future revisions on the plan. We also have gas and electric that's available for the proposed development. And then for stormwater, we've kind of matched the existing drainage patterns where it splits in the middle. The front portion of the site that goes down to West Union would all be collected and fully infiltrated through the 100-year storm event, and we've used the latest NOAA data for the storms, so it's an 8.2-inch storm. It'd fully be infiltrated, and there'd be zero runoff from that portion of the site down to West Union. The back half of the site would go to a large infiltration basin, and that one, we've controlled the rate, so there'd be no increase from the site towards that lower wetland through all the same storms, through that 100-year event. I think that's kind of all I have for the engineering component.
Thank you, Vito. Just again, for the record, my name is Daniel Lassivida, traffic engineer with Vaness and Associates. I just can give you a very brief traffic overview, where I'm going to try to be brief, although I'm going to try to head off some comments that we anticipate coming. Just touching briefly on the driveway locations, Vito had kind of talked about it. The driveways were selected and kind of shifted such that they're at the crest of that hill, the westernmost one. If you've ever been up Memorial Drive, especially if you've walked or biked, it's a relatively substantial hill, so we tried to place that driveway right at the top to be able to get the maximum sightlines seen down with the east driveway also being located far enough away from the west driveway and far enough away from West Union Street that similarly you afford the maximum sightlines. And as Lynn had kind of briefly touched on, we do fully expect a peer review as it relates to traffic. I just kind of double-check everything that I'm about to tell you now, make sure everything was done correctly and according to industry standards. So though, this is just a aerial showing where the site is over to the west, which you can't see, is the MBTA station, and then heading up to the north, northeast is into the center of town. So for the traffic study, we looked at the two signalized intersections along West Union Street, one right at Memorial Drive and Voyager's Lane, then slightly up to the north by Summer Street and Cherry Street, even though it's technically not a part of that intersection. The traffic counts that we collected, that kind of formed the basis of this assessment, were done in May of this year, while schools were in regular session, including the very nearby Ashland Middle School, just to the south of the project site. And over the course of 48 hours, as well as during the peak periods as well, which we did also expand those peak periods to make sure that we covered school pickup and drop-off, as well as when the middle school gets out, which is a little earlier than when we would normally see the peak PM traffic rush, but we wanted to make sure that we had all of that data, especially as it relates to pedestrians, kids walking to or from school. We then essentially developed two conditions, a no-build-and-build condition to assess what the impact of this project is. For the no-build condition, we included a plethora of other developments, the dog park, phase two of the Circus Drive residential development, the other 40Bs, Main Street, Waverly Oaks. I think there were 12 in total that we coordinated with the town on to include. One project we did not include traffic with was the Y. At the time that we were doing this assessment, the traffic study for that project was not out yet. However, in doing so, we also did not include any potential improvements that would have to be done to accommodate the traffic associated with the Y. I did just kind of briefly skim through the traffic study for the Y today. I believe their peak hour trip rates are like anywhere between 170 to 240 vehicles over the course of the peak hour. Just for reference, which you'll see shortly here, this product is between 35 and 40 vehicle trips. So it is a significant amount of traffic that's being generated by the Y that we did not include in our analysis, but also was a part of that. We also didn't assume any improvements either along Memorial Drive or to either of the signalized intersections that would be necessary to accommodate the Y. We then did the same thing that the Y did, and estimated trips associated with this project, based on the trip generation statistics published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the kind of national standard that is used. We anticipate that the project, over the course of an average weekday, over the course of a whole 24-hour period, is expected to generate a little under 500 vehicle trips, with the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours being around 35 to 40 vehicle trips. I will note that a vehicle trip is a one-way trip, so a resident that leaves in the morning to go to work and comes back in the evening from work counts as two trips. So a little under 500 vehicle trips is about 250 vehicles. We then distributed that project-related traffic, as you've seen here. We made sure to go back and look at other developments that have been done in the area to make sure that we're all kind of estimating the proposed distribution of trips the same. As such, we came up with this, with 90%, the majority of it, going to West Union Street, and about 10% heading up towards the T along Memorial Drive. That just kind of includes that those passengers that maybe the day's not as nice as it was out today, and it's in the middle of winter, if they have the card, they may elect to drive down, even if it's well within walking distance. So we wanted to make sure that we were covered on that end, with the remaining 90% going to West Union, and then 70% of that headed up towards the center of town, either taking Summer Streets or Cherry Street, or going up Union Street. We then overlaid that traffic onto the no-build condition to generate the build condition, did all of our analysis, and found that the impact of the project, as it relates to the roadways and the intersections that you see here, was on average an increase in motor's delay of less than five seconds over that anticipated no-build condition, with just a increase in vehicle queuing of one vehicle. So relatively minor, but it is still a... So relatively minor, but it is still an impact. As such, we then had a series of recommendations as they relate to project site access and circulation, including the location of the driveways, as well as some proposed off-site mitigation along West Union Street in an effort to offset the impact of the project. And I'm just about done here. The final thing I will note-
You saw the hook coming out?
Maybe, maybe. I don't want to confirm or deny, but-
Finish, finish up.
The last thing that we also looked at with a specific emphasis on was safety, safety for all users, motorists as well as pedestrians and bicyclists, acknowledging that this is a very walkable area where we're right next to the school. So based on the motor vehicle crash data that was available to us, these roadways, as well as these study area intersections, were found to have below-average crash rates for the region, with no specific deficiencies identified as a part of a review of those And that's it for now.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to the architect.
Thank you.
Hi, all. I'm Jason Skudel. I'm representing the architecture firm Studio Cantonite, and I am just going to quickly walk you through the project. I'll do my best to keep it brief. So as you're, what you're seeing on the screen right now is the ground floor. Like our civil engineer said, the site is sloping. The low side is on the right side, and the high side is on the left side. So the ground floor is for, mainly for amenities space, and it has a nice entrance where there's the port cochere off of the upper right there, and it has a 14-foot clear that we, height, so it works with fire trucks. We made sure to do that. A couple of things that Lynn touched on earlier was some of the amenities are bike storage, fitness, and co-working spaces. Again, we want to make sure that the people who live here do utilize the programs like the Y, and we just really want to make sure to not overdo it here. So now we'll walk you through the typical floor plan. This has, so we have one beds, two beds, three beds, and as you can see, we, you can see how the massing breaks down as you get to each corner. We wanted to make sure that we were thoughtful in the approach to density and massing for this project. As we get to the elevations, we can speak to more of the height and massing. Here's the roof plan. One thing to note is we are utilizing mansard roofs for the fourth floor. What we're doing here is we only have a two-foot parapet above to conceal all of the condensers, and we, I'll, we'll show you now with the exterior elevations, starting with the south elevation up top, the west elevation, east elevation, and then north elevation. North elevation is what you're seeing from Memorial, and you can see the port cochere down there on the left side, and as you can see, the massing gets smaller as the grade goes up, obviously, to the right side, and it was important to break down the massing of the building. So in each point, it feels like its own individual building. And here shows, shows the, kind of the thought behind all the materials for the project, starting with the base, which would be either masonry or brick. The middle section, the floors one through three, would end up being lap siding to work with the context of the neighboring buildings, and then the top is, we're looking at standing seam metal for the mansard roof. And you can see, this is standing not too far from a gentleman over there at 54 West Union, and you can see that we're trying our best to make sure we screen the building with lots of trees. We have, we also have, the landscape is bermed up, so you don't see the retaining walls for the parking. The first iteration, you could see the retaining walls that went around, but after further thought, we are hoping to conceal as much of those retaining walls as possible. Again, this is that port cochere where people could enter and drop off, and then continue on to the parking. And now we're going to, I'm going to give it back to you.
I could just ask one question. I know Ms. Sweet addressed it, but I didn't quite hear. Is there an elevator or no elevator?
There is, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Back, Vito Colonna with Connor Stone. The landscape architect, Mike D'Angelo, couldn't be here today, so I'm just going to cover for him from MDLA. So essentially, the landscape plan is up on the screen. I'm just going to look to see what the next slide is. Okay, so it was just that one. Okay, so we have planted areas along the West Union and Memorial Drive frontages, just to increase the screening and planting along there. They've tried to keep those kind of in sync with the streetlights along that frontage on Memorial Drive and added as much as possible along those. As you see in the corner there, there really wasn't the availability to put more landscaping in that corner, just due to those utility easements that I spoke of earlier and that underground infiltration system that's located in that corner. But everywhere else on the frontage, they've been able to add in those street trees. On the southern border against the butter, in lieu of the street tree, in lieu of the trees, they've added a six-foot-high privacy fence right along that border, just because in that area, we have a relatively steep slope down. It's not a fill slope, it's a cut slope, and it's stabilized with riprap. It really wouldn't be suitable for planting. So they put a six-foot privacy fence on top of that slope to really screen that parking from that butter right there. And then, as you can see, on the kind of other property line to that butter, they've been able to put in a significant amount of landscaping with shrubs and some understory in there. The vehicle sightlines at both entrances have been kept clear, so those sight distances, the sight triangles from the traffic engineer, they've kept open and free from any obstructions. They've, the only modifications along Memorial that they did have to make was there's two streetlights that they're just going to move and relocate along there. And then interiorly, there is sight lighting, and all of it is dark sky compliant. You know, for the lighting plan, we'll verify and show all those details. We've also provided a small gathering area at that covered entry, just to give a kind of entryway as you come in somewhere, if you're waiting for car share or something like that, or greeting guests or anything like that, and it's decorative paving with some fixed-in-place seating. They've included a dog relief area out in the western portion of the property. It's out of sight and smell, but it's easily accessible and helps contain all the dog waste to one contained area. And then down in the detention basin area, they've used a native seed mix down in that area, since it is kind of in close proximity to the wetland, they're using a native seed mix and a mix of native shrubs and trees down on that down gradient berm area. And there are only a few islands that they weren't able to have full-size trees in. That's just basically because of the underground utilities relocating that sewer line, but they were still able to do some plantings, and then in all other landscape islands, they would have full-size tree plantings to help give that shade effect in the parking areas. I think that's all I have on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our formal presentation to you this evening. Just a couple of notes that since we filed for the PEL, we have completed the traffic impact assessment. We did do the water testing. We also completed a stormwater management plan, and we hired and provided a landscape plan and a photometric plan as well. So you've been really patient. We're here to answer any questions that you have.
All of those things have been filed with the planning department, so they'll be available now for the ZBA to look at?
Yes, and everything should be in, I believe that, I believe we delivered notebooks as well, right? I remember carrying those in, so they're in your notebooks, they're available electronically as well. We also did have, the owner of the property has met with some of the neighbors to listen to their concerns as well.
Excellent. What I would like to do is typically, we would open it up to the board members to ask questions, and then open it up to public for questions or comment. The ZBA has not hired any peer review people as yet, experts as yet, and we will do that after we go through the public comment session. I would ask my fellow board members perhaps to withhold questions until we get the benefit of our peer review experts' commentary on this, but obviously feel free to ask a question if you want at this point. And for the public, I would urge questions and comments to be brief. This is the first hearing where we've actually had a presentation, and there will be other hearings going forward addressing specific issues that we have to deal with and decide. So again, you will have ample opportunity to ask questions as the process goes forward. That being said, I have no questions at this time. I'm going to wait until we get the peer review reports in. Brian?
I feel the same way.
Stu?
Same here.
And Ryan?
Same, thank you.
Okay. That being said, we will open it up for public comment. Again, I would ask you to remember that this is just the initial presentation. There'll be many hearings after this, so please be brief. If you're in the room and wish to be, to make a comment or ask a question, please line up against the wall right behind Mr. McNani, and if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, and our town planner Jasmine will let you in, and we'll rotate between in-person and online. The, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. Joe Mignani, Chuhopper Lane, speaking as a resident, not as a public official. I just have a couple of quick questions with respect to the traffic study, and I appreciate it being done. I know you submitted it. Was there any, there wasn't any mention of the UGC project and the traffic that was going to come out of that project? The project was in litigation. It is now out, and it's, there's a rendering being performed by a judge, supposed to have been in February, and they're still waiting on that decision, but the project, if the judge sides with the builder, that project is going to continue. So was there any consideration as to the traffic flow with the UGC project potentially being part of that traffic flow study? Secondly, I was, I saw that the rendering's a very nice project. Little concerned about the safety aspect of it. Both exit and entry locations are on the same side of the street. God forbid there should be an issue or some sort of fire or other medical emergency which blocks one of those road exits or entries. Where is there another way for residents to exit if, God forbid, there should be a fire? Fire apparatus will be all over the roads at that point in time, so I didn't see anything like maybe an emergency gate or anything like that. Was that entertained, or was that something that could be looked into? I don't know where you're going to exit out of, because either that, you're going to go through the wetland, or you're going to go on to West Union Street. But just, just some of the things that I observed real quickly, and I, and I'm not trying to put a wrench in the project, but just some concerns that would happen, or possible that could happen. And was there ever a discussion as to the number of children that would probably be residing at this location, how that impacts the schools? I didn't hear anything with respect to that, so I would, I would just appreciate those answers at some point. Thank you.
I think if we go forward, when we get to a more in-depth traffic analysis, the questions have been asked, the traffic expert is there and can perhaps respond at that time in a better manner than responding now if that's okay with you.
No, that's fine, as long as they're made aware that that action could happen, so.
Exactly.
Yep, appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody online, Jasmine? Yes, Mr. Kogan, good to see you once again tonight. What's your question or comment?
Thank you. I just, small question. I don't, it looks like all the entrances are on Memorial Drive, so why is the address West Union Street?
The address ultimately, I believe, is going to be decided by the town or by the post office?
By the town.
By the town. So I don't believe that has been determined yet unless and until the project is approved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Deb Weekly again. I'm concerned that the number of parking spaces at 1.59 is not realistic, considering that you normally have two people living in a one-bedroom apartment, and then you've got two-bedroom apartments, and then you've got three-bedroom. In addition to that, where would you have visitor parking, or where is overflow parking going to be at? The next question that I have would be, again, I'm going to use the word, I don't think it's realistic in the amount of traffic that will be coming out of Memorial Drive down to the light that's at Summer Street. It's horrendous as it is now. I mean, I came through at four o'clock this afternoon, and there was blockage on the light. It was blocking, the cars could not turn left that were, that were headed east on 135. And the third point, the question that I've got is, are there, is it, the trees, are the trees going to be taken down, like in the front or around? Are we going to leave some mature trees there? Because if you look at Cirrus, they put in stick trees. It's going to take 15, 20 years for those trees to become mature. So the sightline, what you're seeing, I mean, this is a huge building going up, but you've got little tiny trees in front, so I don't know if you're going to put, leave mature trees or plant mature trees.
All those things will be addressed during the landscaping presentation, which will be part of a hearing in the future.
And the parking?
The parking will definitely be taken up. I'm sure we will have a parking or a traffic peer reviewer who will comment on that.
Okay.
And the board will have an opportunity to ask questions and proceed to make a decision on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else online?
We have Cara Camarato online.
Okay, if you would allow her in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please state your human address?
Great. Hi, I'm Cara Hume. I am with the Ashland Sustainability Committee. I just wanted to bring to light that Ashland has made a lot of strides in climate resiliency and sustainability in the last five years. We've passed a net-zero warrant, we have adopted the Opt-In Stretch Code, our newest school is LEED certified, our public safety building has geothermal, we have solar canopies at the high school, and what I didn't hear from the presentation tonight is any of the sustainability features of this plan. So I would love to have a presentation on that, whether solar canopies or EV chargers or green roofs are being considered for this- green roofs are being considered for this project, because our town has a commitment of reaching net zero by 2040. And I assume this building will still be part of the town at that point. So I would love to know how this project is going to help us reach that goal as a town.
That will be something that can be addressed at the hearing when we deal with civil engineering aspects and we have our peer review commenter. Any other?
Not online.
Okay, we're going to close the online public comment and we have one final person coming up to the podium in person.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Chris Moroney, 94 Voyagers. I have to also comment that I'm a numbers girl. I'm a math educator, so I appreciate the numbers information, but it doesn't take away from the actual impact so that those of us who have to drive that way every day have to encounter the length of time it takes to get from one point to another. And I really think that that needs to be thoroughly investigated, the timing of the lights, et cetera. So I'd like a more in-depth review of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that will close public comment for tonight. As I said, each hearing that we have on this matter, there will be an opportunity for public comment to be, to be voiced. The next order, I believe, would be for the board to vote to approve peer reviewers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and who do we have lined up for us to consider?
We have Mike Carter from GCG Associates for the wetlands. And let me pull up, I apologize, the second who the site is. GCG is the, Haley Ward would be the civil, yes. They're sewer and then they'll also do utilities and things like that. Mike Carter will just really focus on the stormwater and the wetlands.
Can we continue on asking and telling the board who we're going to consider for peer reviews?
So far, it's Haley Ward for the site review and Mike Carter from GCG for the stormwater. We're still waiting to hear back from our traffic peer review. MDM Consultants has a conflict because they are the
The Y.
The engineer for the Y, so we had to reach out to other.
Okay. Any questions from board members about the two peer reviewers at the present time that are before us for consideration?
I don't have any questions, but just a comment from what Cara from Sustainability was saying. If there's any way that you can incorporate solar canopies or other sustainability measures, that would be great.
Stu, any questions about the peer review experts that are being proposed?
No, sir.
And Ryan, how about you? Any questions?
Just clarification, the one we're waiting on was traffic, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yes and no questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have no questions about either of those. So the chair will entertain a motion to hire the two peer reviewers from GCG and also from Haley Ward. So moved. Is there a second?
I second that.
Aye, John Trefethan vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent. Okay. That concludes, I think, what we have to do, Jasmine, doesn't it?
It does. We just had one question about if the applicant had asked if we did get a peer review proposal back from traffic, if we may move forward with that prior to waiting for the 30th, so they may begin.
Oh, sure. I mean, I think if we get peer review reports back at any point, they should be forwarded to the applicant and not waiting to give it to them at a meeting date, at which point it's useless to discuss that night because they haven't considered it. Then I think the only thing we do have to, before continuing tonight's hearing, is, as I had indicated at the outset of our meeting, our next meeting is going to be September 30th and not September 23rd, which would be our normal date, if you're available. If you're not available, we're going to have to figure something else out.
May I ask just a question on the peer reviews with regard to establishing
Sure.
the peer review account? Because I, I'm assuming that you're want, going to want the developer to deposit some money into the account?
Yes, the developer typically funds the account and that's what we're
Sure. So, so are you looking for the developer to put, say, you know, $10,000 in and if it gets down to two?
That's something that you should take up with the town planner.
Oh, okay. You, you don't make that decision.
We don't consider that unless the planner presents it to us with an issue, but otherwise, it's an administrative matter that you and Jasmine should discuss.
Terrific. Okay, we'll, we'll work on, on how much money we need to deposit with Jasmine directly. The team has no, no issue with a continuance to the 30th. Our concern is how far along are the peer reviews going to be in three weeks' time? We want to be able to not only get the peer reviews in the door, but have a week to respond to them. So we're, we're happy to come back on the 30th. If we're not ready to have a further discussion, we can extend then.
Would you prefer that we schedule, reschedule it for a later date at this point to give us a little more time? I mean, typically we do every two weeks.
Yeah.
This is going to be a three-week continuance. For our next meeting after that would be, I believe it's October 7th.
I, I think that that is more practical. I think we can accomplish a lot
Then why don't we do that?
from now to the 7th.
Motion to continue to October 7th. That good with the board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You're not scheduled to meet on October 7th.
We're not. When are we scheduled?
Because that's one week later.
The 14th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're scheduled to meet October 14th.
The 14th, okay then.
Hang on. Need to click.
My apologies.
That's all right.
No, no, no.
I don't always know when I'm supposed to be where.
I'm fine. Our team. Anybody have an issue? Terrific. Thank you so much.
Okay, so a motion for the 14th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye, John Trefethan vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent. That, motion to continue the hearing until the 14th is what we just did, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't need to go back and do that all over again. No. Okay. Definitely getting punchy as the evening gets later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, could we, Whacka, could we take a brief five-minute recess while we allow folks to exit the room? A significant number of people seem to be leaving. Thank you, and welcome back to the Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. Moving on to item number six in our agenda, which is a continuance of a public hearing at 10-60 Main Street at 40B Comprehensive Permit Request. The hearing on this matter opened on January 7th, 2025, and we've met numerous times up to the present time. The matter was continued to today for a, what I would describe as a preliminary discussion of some of the concerns about the site and the Nianza contamination and what effect it might have on the project going forward. That is an issue which the ZBA has very limited control over. The plume, as it were, is overseen by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Protection. At the last meeting, there was a discussion concerning, and some questions have been raised about the project and construction going forward and what happens to the plume, et cetera. And we felt it might be helpful for the public to hear from representatives from the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Protection to just give a, a brief, sort of broad oversight of what their role going forward after, or if and/or after this project is, is approved. We've invited those representatives. One of them is here tonight. The other one was not able to be here tonight, but will be with us on September 30th. And in order to sort of function in a, in a more refined way, we've asked the public to submit written questions that they have about, about the issues that our two experts from the agencies would talk about, and those will be addressed at the September 30th meeting. I know Mr. Angler, the developer, had talked at some length at the last meeting concerning what his understanding of what his obligations were, et cetera. But we thought it might be helpful if we could have the representative from the, the Environmental Protection Agency to come forward and perhaps just talk a little bit at the, about the process going forward as far as what the, what the EPA's oversight would be. Hi, and if you could just state your name and address for the record, please. Nice to see you again.
Hi there. Good evening. Lisa Thewatt from, actually, I don't live in Ashland, but I'm with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and I am currently the remedial project manager for the Nianza Chemical Waste Dump Superfund Site. So is, as that, is the Superfund Site, if you're not familiar, it's located off of McGonagall Road in, in Ashland, and it's one of the oldest Superfund Sites. Most of the cleanup at the site has been completed. The remaining work that's going on at the site really pertains to groundwater. So there's historical, you know, releases and contamination at the site, and the ones that we're looking at now are the volatile organic compounds, which are, are, are still, you know, kind, there's still areas of the site below ground where there's some residual contamination that's feeding a plume of groundwater that's flowing through the subsurface, mostly at depth, and it's flowing from the site on McGonagall Road toward the Sudbury River in sort of a northeast direction. So it does flow under downtown Ashland. As the plume gets closer to the surface, one of our concerns is vapor intrusion, it's called. plume gets closer to the surface, one of our concerns is vapor intrusion, it's called. It's almost similar, if you think of it from a perspective of radon. You can have these contaminants in the groundwater. They, just to make a note, they have gone down significantly over time. My predecessor, who worked on this site, he worked on installing sub-sub depressurization systems in quite a few homes and businesses, including the town hall, actually, that are maintained by the MAS DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, and those ensure that any vapors that might emanate from the groundwater through the unsaturated zone in the soil, we don't want those, like, going up into, you know, building foundations, like basements and first floors. So, similar to radon, like a radon system. So, a lot of businesses and, and homes close to the Sudbury River, that's where the groundwater becomes a lot more shallow because it meets the Sudbury River. So, this plume that emanates from the site does flow under a section of, you know, ten to sixty Main Street, under that mill. In the past, one of my predecessors had done some indoor air testing in the mill as it exists today, and it, you know, basically, we have, like, screening levels. We have residential screening levels for indoor air and commercial screening levels, and be because the property is currently being used for commercial purposes. All of the indoor air data, you know, passed, and it was safe for commercial use. So, the plume kind of cuts under the property. Again, it's in the, it's in the subsurface, but it's varying depths depending on, like, the seasonal groundwater level. It can be anywhere from a few feet below ground down to fifteen feet, depending on the well. On the, so there's, we have, we actually have three, the EPA actually has three monitoring wells for the Superfund Site. We call them, like, down gradient monitoring wells that we have on this property now. So, what we would look, you know, for in this project is to ensure that if there's any occupancy, whether commercial, there's not going to be any residential occupancy on the first floor. The plans, so we're kind of taking a look at the plans, you know, what engineering controls and designs are being done to mitigate the potential for this VOC vapor intrusion. And essentially, you know, we don't have any deed restrictions on the property, but we do have an interest in ensuring that, you know, human health risk is mitigated and that anyone that lives in that complex is protected. So, we're, at this point, we've looked at, under the MAS contingency plan, there is a release abatement measure report that talks about both, like, the historical contamination that's present at the property, because it was a mill property, and there were some historical releases there, as well as the co-mingling of the Nianza-related groundwater that flows under the property. And this particular report, myself and my counterpart, Jennifer McQueeney with MAS DEP, were both, like, thoroughly reviewing this plan. We've looked at a lot of the, you know, design and construction plans that have been submitted to the town. We've been on a site walk with some of the proposed developers. And, yeah, we just want to ensure that, that the project has the correct controls so that there's no risk to anyone living there, essentially. The state also currently has an activity and use limitations on the property that, I believe, does not allow residential, so they would, after, after the state receives, you know, adequate information that they've tested the soil, they've tested the groundwater, you know, then they would, you know, they, they can alter the activity and use limitations once they're comfortable with the construction design. So, I know that you mentioned there's going to be maybe some questions that people submit that we're, like, happy to answer later this month, if they, you know, people need a little bit more, a little bit more detail, a little bit more information on the project. But, but so far, you know, we have received, again, some monitoring data. Like I said, we have three, three wells on the property that have, we have historical groundwater data, and then in this particular, it's called a RAM report, under the MAS contingency plan. We also have information on soil gas sampling that the licensed site professional that's working on the project, they've submitted groundwater data that they've taken, they've submitted, yeah, so it's some soil gas data under the historical part of the building that they want to maintain, which is, like, ten Main Street. That's nice, the stone, the stonework section of the mill complex. So, we're kind of just reviewing that information, and we're going to provide feedback to the project, LSP, and if we need more information or have any further suggestions, we're going to do that. Kind of on, just like, again, on behalf of the human, human health risk perspective of it as it pertains to both the Superfund Site, and then DEP also has another interest because the state, it's also a, sort of a state cleanup site in addition to being impacted by the Superfund Site.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. As I had indicated, she will be back at our next meeting on September thirtieth, having had an opportunity to review the questions that have been submitted in writing, as we've requested they be, in order to have a more orderly presentation. And we'll also have the representative from the DEP present as well. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yep.
Mr. Engler, I know you made a rather detailed presentation at our last meeting about the construction process and what your obligations or responsibilities would be. Is there anything else you want to add briefly to, to what our previous testifier said about the problem? And again, all of this is designed to provide the public with some understanding of what happens, and that if the project is approved, the construction just doesn't run amok with no ongoing safety oversight.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeff Engler, representing SOV Ashland, the applicant in this matter. I appreciate the comments. Nothing that was stated came as a surprise, or would we have any conflict with, you know, all of those activities are things that we need to not choose to undertake, we need to undertake following the issuance of the permit. So, we have, in fact, completed a remedial action plan or a draft that completely completed and submitted once we're through this process. And the activity and use limitation, we are submitting a draft, but that cannot be finalized, actually, until much later in the process, when we've actually demonstrated, you know, in, in construction, that we've done what has been asked of us. So, those things are very much on our radar. It was mentioned about the vapor intrusion. I think we've talked several times about our need to do a vapor intrusion barrier. I think, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago, I submitted some information for the record from our actual subcontractor about that, because I think there was some misinformation provided about the lifespan of the vapor intrusion barrier that we will be including in our project. I think we've clarified that for the benefit of the board. But we look forward to the comments. I, is it possible, I don't know, the protocol, can we see the questions that get asked? Because we may be able to come prepared, you know, with some, because I, I think Mr. Campbell, our LSP, hopefully, will be able to attend on the thirtieth, but there, maybe it's strictly for those other people to address, but if, I'm just saying, if there's some way we could be helpful with some of those questions, we'd be happy to contribute.
Counsel?
I was just going to say, before we conclude this item tonight, do you want to talk about the expectations for the process on the, on the thirtieth, and how we intend to proceed so that the public and Mr. Engler can understand that better?
Well...
And I'm happy to do that, too, but...
You know, what we're, you know, there's a, there's a statement that, that I wanted to make, and it's in the process of being drafted but not finalized as yet, about, about the process. And we want this not to be a, we anticipate that obviously there are going to be people that are going to be, rightly so, because Nianza ruined many lives here in Ashland for a very long time, about the process. And what we wanted to have is an orderly process. We've asked for questions to be submitted in writing in advance. We've already received a number of them. There's a lot of duplication in those questions. Jasmine is going to synthesize the questions down to a, and a number that can be addressed, frankly, in the, in, in one meeting. We've received a number of written questions. It's still open, so if anybody wants to ask questions, submit them in writing to Jasmine, our town planner, so that she can consider them. But we're not anticipating on the thirtieth that we're going to have an open public comment period beyond what the written questions are, because otherwise, the meeting could go on for hours, we anticipate, and that would not serve our people who are coming here from the government to talk about the project, you or members of the board. So, that's how we're planning to proceed.
Yep.
Yes, counsel.
And may I just offer one extra comment on that. So, part of that effort is to collect these questions, consolidate them, make it an efficient process and respectful of everybody's time. And so, we'll post those and make those available for the benefit of the public, for yourself, and for everyone else, and so that everyone knows coming in here what the questions are going to be, essentially the agenda. And any, anyone who wants to add to that list, we'll have the chance to do that now, and that'll set expectations for that. So, that would include you as well, of course.
Excellent.
And if I may just add one more addition to that as well. While we don't anticipate having questions on the floor that evening, because we anticipate that would be too difficult and get unruly, we do realize that there would likely be other questions that are brought up during that meeting, that maybe their answers produce additional questions. We would still welcome those. If you could please send them to me, and we can still get those questions answered by DEP and the EPA. We just don't want to have it open on the floor, to be respectful of the agency's time. It's very kind of them to offer their time to come in and offer their expertise, so we just are in our best effort to be respectful of their time. We think that would just be the best way going forward. So, of course, we do reckon, we do recognize there will be additional questions, but please send them to me after.
Okay, great. Very good. Mr.?
Just have a quick question with respect to submitting the, your questions. Will those questions be allowed to be reviewed by everybody before this meeting? Because there may be questions, pertinent questions, that haven't been asked. And if you're not allowed people to ask those questions on the thirtieth, those questions will never be asked or answered. So, is there a possibility that we can get those questions in advance so we know what questions haven't been asked, that should be asked?
Absolutely. We can accumulate the questions that have already been asked, and as Brian said, we'll share them on the website, so that way the public and also the applicant has an opportunity to see which questions have already been asked. And then, of course, after the thirtieth, if there are additional questions, we'll, we'll continue that process to send them to me, to be sent to the EPA to have answers, or DEP.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, as Jasmine pointed out, there'll be a before and an after, and so we'll, we'll certainly pick up as many questions as we can through that process. But please don't hesitate to ask the question that you want to hear answered, whether or not we've received it from anybody else. So, if anybody feels it's important, this is an important issue, we recognize that. And so, we may receive the same question from eight to ten different people, and that's absolutely fine. We will review those in advance, just to make sure there aren't too many redundancies in there. But please don't hesitate waiting for someone else to ask the question. If you have a question, please ask it, and we'll review that before we post it.
Yes, Mr. Engler.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, just make a comment, which the board and counsel already knows, but I, I, I make it mostly for those joining us from the public. I mean, I think the public should really be grateful to the board and, and, and others for going through this process, because, as I've said, and I'm being very collaborative, but we could kick and scream and say, this is not for the jurisdiction of the ZBA. The ZBA's charge is to serve in place of all local permit-granting authorities. We are going to be seeking a permit from the state. As such, the ZBA is no hunt in this game other than information. So, I think members of the board should know that as part of the permit, the board doesn't really have jurisdiction other than to say, we have to go to DEP and get all governing permits, which we already know. But it's not like traffic, it's not like civil engineering, it's not like local water and sewer, any of the things that we've talked about. And I'm not saying this, we, we cannot take this matter any more seriously than we're taking it, and we will do everything we can to address all of these.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I think I made that clear at the very outset of this hearing tonight, and I appreciate your saying nice things about us once again. You tend to do that at least once at every hearing, meeting, and it's appreciated. However, understood. We understand our role, and you understand our role, and hopefully, the public understands our role as we continue to try and weave through the process. I think the only thing remaining to be decided tonight is a, the question of an extension of time for the hearing. At our last meeting, you had agreed to a date of September twenty-fifth, but had kindly indicated that as long as we're making progress going forward, it would be sort of a rolling date. But I think for our purposes, where we're not going to be meeting on the twenty-third, because you may not have been present when I announced that, but it's Russia Shona.
I was.
Okay. The next meeting, September thirtieth, would be beyond that date of September twenty-fifth, so I think we would like to continue, a date, maybe another thirty-day extension at this point, and continue to make progress to hopefully start to finalize things.
I, I think that's acceptable. I'll, I'll work with counsel to provide the, you know, the typical letters that we've provided in the past. And the next hearing is the thirtieth, not, right?
Is the thirtieth, correct.
Yeah, I think it was the twenty-fifth. I think it was through. So, all right, so we'll work on a date in October, and I'll get that to counsel.
Much appreciated. Okay. Motion to continue the hearing to September thirtieth at seven PM, if I have that correct?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Thank you very much. That concludes the hearing for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Engler, and thank you, I've already forgotten your name, I apologize, but thank you for being present tonight. Item number seven on the agenda is a continuance of a public hearing involving sixty-one Wayville East Street forty B comprehensive permit. We have convened the hearing on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five initially, and we have met multiple times since then. And I see the applicant's representative is here with his papers getting organized and ready to step forward.
First of all, this is the extension?
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it. Good evening. It's real good to see you again. If I may call you by your first name.
You may. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I won't take that same informality.
That's fine. We do want a certain amount of dignified response here. Okay. First item that I want to address tonight is the deadline for the close of the hearing. I know we have requested an extension of sixty days previously, which you, in an email, declined. I believe Jasmine more recently suggested perhaps a thirty-day continuance, and you also, while not declining that, deferred it. And I think before we go forward with the presentation tonight and decide when we may next meet, we need to work out... next meet, we need to work out whether or not we're going to cooperatively have an agreement to extend the time of the hearing, which I would suggest would benefit both you, your employer, and the board, or whether or not, at which point the board is going to have to take certain action and make certain decisions that may not be in your best interests, and it may not be in the board's best interests. So I don't usually speak in this manner, but I think we're in a position where we weren't able to resolve this issue via email or phone calls outside of a public hearing, so we're going to have this conversation before the public.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, and I think just at the outset, my view on that, or not my view, but our ownership's kind of desire is to just get a little bit more clarity from the board in terms of what additional, kind of where we stand essentially in the process. I think we're amenable to extending, as we have been throughout the process, working with the board, and extending the timeframe for the board to review the project and feel comfortable that it's done that. We feel that we've supplied and provided in a very timely way responses to all of the informational requests that the board has made. You know, the process has, I think, stalled a little bit over the last several months with not a whole lot of, you know, meaningful additional information being provided to us, or questions in the form of reports from, for example, Haley and Ward. And so we just wanted to make sure that we're kind of walking down the road in lockstep with the board before we, you know, have a better sense of how much time the board needs for its review. So what we were prepared to do this evening is provide an extension until the 30th at the next hearing. Hopeful that we can make some headway this evening with any remaining questions, or if there's additional information that we need to provide, we're happy to do so. But I guess, in summary, we wanted to get some additional direction and clarity as to where any remaining open items are.
Jasmine, what is the date?
The 21st.
The 21st? Okay. And you're proposing granting us an extension for an additional nine days beyond that to the 30th, which is when our next scheduled meeting would be?
Correct.
Well, you know, my comment would be that if for some reason on the 30th you don't agree to extend the time beyond that, if it's necessary, and I'm going to assume frankly that it's going to be necessary, then we're between a rock and a hard place, because we have to close the hearing that night and go on to 40 days of meetings. And again, those may not work in our best interest or in your best interest, but if you won't go beyond that 30-day period, that period to September 30th, then so be it. You know, we've worked very cooperatively throughout this process, I thought, with you. There have been some delays on both sides, as counsel reminded me, and I would hate to see the relationship not end cooperatively, but if that's what it's going to take, then that is what it is going to take. And I understand there's been some delay on our part with getting some peer review people to meet with your people. You know, we've done the best we can on that, and if we're not able to meet in a timely fashion, then that, we will go forward without that.
May I make a suggestion?
I mean.
Step in front of any of your board members on this, if anyone else wanted to speak. Just two things. I mean, the 180 days is premised upon, and the regulation actually reflects this, that the timely submission of materials in response to reasonable requests. And so I think there's been some times that they were waiting for things, and there's been some times that we were waiting for things, right? And so we may have lost 30 days at the beginning, waiting for things, but now we're at the end of the 180 days, so we're asking some reciprocity there for that. So while we're talking about that and considering that, why don't we, I believe we have Haley Ward here today, is that right?
Yes.
And so there are a couple of, you know, concrete issues that we are discussing tonight that's on the agenda. Why don't we address those, see where we're at? This is just my suggestion. And then identify the things that we intend to do with that time period that we're asking for, and maybe by the time we get through that, the applicant will have a better sense of why we're asking for some additional time here, so we can accomplish those things. And I will offer one other thing, and I think the applicant heard this with respect to 1060 Main Street, is that one of the things we tend to do during the public hearing process as we near the end, and we have a clearer vision of what a draft decision might look like, is to start to use some of that public hearing time to start working on that decision. So we've agreed to share it when it's ready to be shared with Mr. Engler. I imagine the board would be okay. I'm speaking for them, but when we get to that point, I suspect that they would be okay with us getting to the point where we start working on that draft decision, so we can share it with you. So we want to use that time productively, as I'm sure you do. And so if the hearing gets closed prematurely, we have two problems. We have a lack of information, from our perspective, on some of the things that we're talking about now. But then we're going to have to use all that 40 days. And so either way, the 40 days, if you tack it on to the end, we end at the same place, you know? And so however you use it, it ends up being the same time period. So just wanted to offer that comment now, and maybe we can circle back to that before we continue tonight and see where the applicant's at.
I learned a long time to always listen to my attorney and follow his advice, so that sounds fine with me. Okay, Israel, we have the report from, supplemental report from Haley Ward dated September 5th of 2025, responding to comments that the applicant had made previously about water and sewer connections, and you've had an opportunity to review that, I hope. I know it was.
I don't believe so.
Oh, you just received it?
Mr. Chair, we actually have not received the report as of, well, as of when I left the office this evening to come here. And again, that's.
Then I can understand some frustration on your part, as I was anticipating that you had received it. Does it make sense to ask the engineer from Haley Ward to discuss the?
Greg is on, but Bethany.
Bethany was on earlier, but I think she may have.
So I don't know if Greg can speak to this.
Bethany is up there? I guess she's up there, okay.
Oh, she's, I'm sorry, Bethany, I'm looking right over you.
That's all right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Can you hear, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm Bethany Ordon. I work with Haley Ward Engineers. Yeah, I did not send the letter directly to you, and I'm sorry, that's my mistake. I thought it would be distributed through Jasmine, but I did not specifically ask her to do that, so I'll take responsibility for that. But yes, we received your response letter. And while we're not pushing back further on the response for the water, the sewer response, really, we feel that it's, you know, your response was that there was a connection fee that is charged by the town to connect to the utilities, and that that fee is more than enough to do any investigations that they're requesting. And I really think that's a misleading argument, and that's what we're pushing back against. The town does not have these fees paid in pocket right now to invest in these investigations. We're requesting that you do some limited investigations into the capacity of the sewer that is going to be directly impacted by your development. And the length of sewer that we're asking to be investigated is only 2,500 feet. It is not as long as you had claimed in your letter, so we really feel that it's a reasonable request, and we'd be open to talking to you about it more.
We won't ask you for a specific response. Obviously, you haven't had an opportunity to review the report or to contemplate your response, perhaps?
Well, we have done some analysis and looked at the requests that were made in the Haley Ward letter. I also want to point out that we have our engineer who's joining us by video conference this evening, Will Park from SMMA, who's done, and this was included in the letter that we submitted to Haley Ward, you know, back on, I think it was July 20, sometime in July, I don't have the letter in front of me. But I think it might be helpful with respect to the analysis if Will could just share the analysis that was done to look at the capacity within the sewer line that we're tying into, because that's, I think, the crux of the issue is, is there capacity within the sewer line that we're tying into, which is on Union Street? And the analysis that we conducted indicates that there is capacity there. And so Will, I don't know if he can be allowed to speak on the call.
I've asked him.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, he can talk.
He was just up.
Can you hear me?
You're a little soft, a little bit louder if you could.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Will Park, civil engineer at SMMA in Cambridge. As Israel mentioned, we did a capacity analysis of the sewer beneath East Union Street that was constructed in the 2000s for the high school project. And, you know, being that only the high school and a few single-family residences connect to it, we found that the existing capacity is using very conservative estimates of flow and assuming that the residential and high school peak uses perfectly overlap, which we know is not the case. They actually are quite the opposite of each other in terms of when the peak rates, peak flow rates occur. We found that the various segments, due to their slopes, range in available capacities, but the existing pipe with those conservative flow rates ranges between 7% capacity and 15% capacity. And with the addition of the proposed residential project, those increase slightly to a range between 10 and 36%, well, well, well below approaching a capacity concern. So we feel confident that the connection point between the proposed residential project and with the information we have available, that there is adequate capacity now and in the future.
Well, I guess my question is, in the report from Haley Ward on September 5th, they mentioned that there's a low-slope sewer through the area with capacity to serve the existing flow, but may be pushed to its limit with this proposed development. So I guess my question to Bethany is, is the fact that it's a low, a low-slope sewer questions whether or not a sewer line that's functioning at 7 or 15% capacity can continue to function adequately?
Yes, the slope is very relevant, and it doesn't surprise me that the new section of sewer that they included in their evaluation had plenty of capacity for the new development. It's a high-slope sewer line. It can convey a lot more flow than a flatter or lower-slope sewer line. So we are simply asking that the evaluation be continued downstream to where it goes through the section of low-slope sewer and through to the pump station, which again is a 25-foot extension of the evaluation that they had already conducted.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, our, I guess, response to that would be that the location of where that low-flow point is, is well beyond, well beyond the extent of our site, and is impacted not exclusively by our proposed project. In fact, by the time, you know, there are, I don't know how many connections between our site and where that low-flow point occurs. And so while I understand the desire for the town to want to know what the flow is at that location, we don't believe that it's appropriate to kind of put that requirement on this particular, you know, on this project, especially in light of, you know, the very significant fees, connection fees that the project will be providing to the town that can certainly be used for that purpose if the town would like to undertake that kind of study.
Well, I think Haley Ward's report addresses your position about the use of connection fees and how it's not something that frankly should be used for the purpose that you're suggesting they should be used for. And frankly, their, their argument makes sense to me, but we can hear from the rest of the board as we discuss or decide this matter. Anything else on this, on this matter, before I ask the board if they have any questions?
Only that we, we did get confirmation that the architectural review would happen, but we don't have a timeline at this time.
Okay. Well, again, that is one of the, one of the presenting problems, and we will hopefully have that issue solved within the next week or so, and we can move forward expeditiously with that, because I think that's holding, holding things up.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think that, that really sort of is emblematic of the crux that, that we're in, where we're trying to be responsive as much as we can. We met to discuss a potential review of some of the design for the project over a month, about a month ago at this point. It was not something that had been brought up previously. We agreed to do that and to take some, some further feedback and commentary. I actually made an effort to reach out to some of the folks that were involved in that process for the 1060 Main Street project. I kind of got whacked on the hand for sort of going.
And I understand the.
Outside of the, the normal process.
The responsibility is not, it's not on you on that, it's the availability of one of the, one of the members that was going to interact with you, so.
Yeah. So I guess with all that said, we certainly want to continue working with the town. We don't want to put the board in the position of giving the board an ultimatum and saying, you know, we won't extend this process unilaterally. We don't want to do that. All we're trying to do is get more clarity on what the remaining issues are. I've noted the water and sewer response, or I guess feedback. Once I received the letter from Haley Ward, maybe we can sit down with them and have a further conversation and see if we can sort of, I'm encouraged to hear that, you know, maybe there's a way to limit the, the length of sewer line that we need to review. So I think we're open to continuing that dialogue and trying to, you know, finalize that issue. I don't, beyond that, I think we've, we've addressed everything that, that we've been asked. I did have two things that I wanted to follow up on from our last hearing. These were questions that were raised by Board Member Forrestal. And I think another one was something, a topic, it has to do with the utility pole. It's been a topic that we've talked about at length. So I, in, in the spirit of wanting to work cooperatively with the board, we did do a little bit of research into that utility pole, and I think we would be comfortable if, if we get to an approval of the project with a condition that we would remove that utility pole, subject to approval by the utility company that has jurisdiction on it. We can't, you know, control whether they decide not to, but we're certainly open to working with the utility company to relocate the pole and would be willing to do that. So that's number one. And the other. And the other comment was with respect to, you know, doing some work along the Waverly Street 135 side of our site in order to, to prep the site, if you will, for a sidewalk. That's something that, that we looked at and really kind of at the, at the macro level and looking at it just in terms of how that fits in with the broader pedestrian and traffic flow along that street. Installing a sidewalk along that side of the street would be very problematic for a number of reasons. But first, just primarily, our project isn't really going to be sending any pedestrian traffic along Waverly Street. There's, there are no sidewalks there currently. There are really no amenities along that street that would attract any kind of meaningful pedestrian activity. There is a sidewalk on Union Street. And so anyone that would be looking to go for a walk would more likely go along Union Street where there is pedestrian accommodation. Putting that aside, just from a practical standpoint, one of the things that was central to our design was trying to reduce the amount of impact that the project would have. We shrank the footprint of the building considerably, and putting a sidewalk along that stretch would require not only blasting and export of soil along the stretch of parcel that we control, we don't control the entire length of that street down to the intersection with Union Street. So I'm not sure what would happen for that remaining section. And then going east along Waverly Street, that entire length of roadway is also, also has that same topography. And all you have to do is sort of a, a Google Street View. I can bring it up now if, if the board likes, but even on Roberts Road, and I know that some of the commentary has come from Mr. Johnson on Roberts Road, we looked at it, and his house would need to have a retaining wall put along the street there. So it would create a significant amount of export and work along the entire length for really a sidewalk that, there is no sidewalk project that's being contemplated by the town of Ashland. So for all those reasons, we just don't think it's a very practical thing to implement. If a sidewalk were ever to be implemented, the place to do it would be on the other side, the north side of, of Waverly Street, where the topography is a lot more amenable, if you will. It doesn't require blasting and export removal in simple terms. So I just wanted to make that point because it was something that we looked at and explored and thought it was, made sense to share with the board for feasibility standpoint.
Thank you. Let me ask the board members if they have any questions. Brian, any questions and what's been discussed tonight?
Yeah, just to be clear, what, what I asked about the granite outcropping is that one corner just before where your driveway is going to go heading east to be removed so that someday someone can put a sidewalk there. Not you guys, I don't want you guys to put a sidewalk
Yep.
In, I'm just asking that. One of the big things is the sightline right there for that driveway.
Yep.
You know, I'm sure driven by it, as I have, and the outcropping, which I believe is on your property, is the major problem in that corner. The thing that
Right.
We got a lot of comments about is that. So what I'm asking is if your company, in conjunction with this project, to put all these people in that area, would remove that so that someday someone else could put sidewalks there when the time comes?
Yep.
Because Ashland is putting sidewalks in and connectors all, all over town, all the little streets that go out. And I imagine that someday they'll want it on 135. And I've looked at the other side of the street, and it's a drop-off for most of it. So I don't know how you would put a sidewalk on that side. That's why I think it would really be helpful to this project and calm a lot of people in the area with
Yep.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
And we, if we were to do that
Yep.
You'd have to replace ledge with, you know, 15-foot retaining wall in that location, which would run, you know, for a very long portion of that, of that roadway. So you'd be replacing, you know, what is a somewhat vegetated, you know, rock outcropping with, you know, a very significant retaining wall. And I think you'd end up with, you'd still end up with, you know, a massive retaining wall there, which was one of the things that we were trying to avoid because of the, you know, obviously, the, the aesthetic impact of that along the roadway. And the sightlines don't, at, at where the rock cropping is, you know, you can still achieve the sightlines, which is what MDM, the traffic consultant, was able to confirm.
Agreed. So are you saying that if you take whatever that number is, 10 or 15 feet of that rock out, that there isn't another rock that's going to be the same type of thing right along the road? Like, I, I didn't scramble up those rocks and see how far
Yeah.
That rock goes, but it looks to me like that rock, if you remove the first 10 or 15 feet, whatever that number is, along that
Yep.
Stretch of the road, that you would have the same rock?
You'd, you'd need, and we can show this on a plan, but you'd need to, you, you couldn't pull the, if you pull the rock back, then it affects the way the, the slope for the project in that location, and you'd need to essentially build up a wall there in order to accommodate the design as, as it currently stands.
So it isn't rock all the way up that
It's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't know that part, I didn't climb up it.
Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Stu, any questions on what we've discussed tonight?
No, sir.
And Ryan, how about yourself?
I, I just want to clarify, so the response from Haley and Ward, we will get some further response from your end at the next meeting? Is that correct relative to the additional 2,500-foot analysis?
Yes, we, we haven't received the letter yet from Haley Ward, so we don't know what it says. We'll, we'll review it, and we can, we'll have an update, we'll have some response at, at the next hearing.
So it's not a firm no right now, is what I was clarifying?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no questions. Okay, then, let's go on to discussing the extension. The next hearing would be scheduled for September 30th. We can put you first on the agenda for that evening, so you're not last as you are this evening. We try and rotate hearing to hearing so people don't always be last. Can we have an extension of time beyond the 30th, or are you standing firm on September 30th?
Well, I, I have to stand firm on the 30th for now. It's, I, I also have a board that I report to, and that's what I am able to commit to this evening.
Okay. Well, this can be a very long process going forward through a hearing, through the housing agency, through the courts. It can be a very long time, if that's what it comes down to, and hopefully it won't come down to that.
Well, look
But can we have a
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Just a clarifying question. The board had proposed a 60-day extension originally. Does the board anticipate that that's going to be sufficient time to conclude?
I can't commit to that because it involves people that I don't control as far as when we can do certain things. I would, I would certainly hope that we would be able to finish it within 60 days. If you're not comfortable with that, we can do it 30 days at a time, as it were. I just don't like having a deadline being the night of our scheduled hearing because then we have, our backs are up against a wall, and we have no option but to close the hearing. And again, as I've said before, and I don't want to repeat myself, but I will, that would not benefit you or your client, and it would not benefit the board, and it would not benefit the citizens of Ashland, and I would not want to come to that, that's all.
Understood.
So 60 is not feasible, then, you know, 30, but I don't, I don't want to go to the day of the hearing as being the day that we're going to have to close the hearing, no matter what happens. I don't, I don't work that way. And I don't think this board works that way. I believe I'm speaking for everybody in that regard.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I think what I can commit to is continuing dialogue with the board in between this hearing and the next, and maybe we can come to a different agreement in terms of an extension for this evening. I
Well, the deadline is going to be up before we have our next meeting, so if we don't have an agreement tonight
Well, we're agreeing to extend the hearing till the 30th, and what I'm
Okay.
What I'm suggesting is that prior to that time, we might
By all means.
If it's okay with the
By all means.
Yeah. I know you have to report to your board as well, and so I'm, I'm really offering this as, as sort of reiterating something you probably already know, which is if the public hearing closes prematurely, then the dialogue is cut off between, you know, our team and your team. And that means that I'm writing a decision and working with the board on a decision that may not be the one you like. And so if you're able to reach an agreement with Haley Ward that they can report to the board and we get past this impasse, that's more likely to result in a decision that you're not going to object to. Left to my own devices and the instructions of this board, it may result in conditions that are objectionable because we didn't have the benefit of that cooperation, that dialogue. Objectionable conditions lead to appeals, appeals are resources, and time and money spent that you're not working on a project. So I know, I'm certain you're already aware of all this, but just really saying it so that you can take it back to your board. I don't want to find the board in that position, working with me towards that kind of a decision, but that would be the position we're in if we close the hearing because we have no choice. And so just want to get that on the record as well. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Will you provide a letter to, to the board, giving us an extension to the 30th of September?
Yes, and I have that letter with me this evening.
Very good, thank you.
I guess we will continue, I'm not sure where things stand with respect to the architectural review. We haven't
I would suggest that the burden is on us to get the people together so that they can contact you, and that will not be your responsibility, that will be ours.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Before you continue
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Whoops. Stu's, yes, Stu, I'm sorry.
Between now and the future date that you folks are talking
30th.
About, will Mr. Israel be talking to Haley and Ward?
My understanding is that what, what he said was that when he receives the letter, and Jasmine may already have sent it to him via email during the meeting, he's going to review it and get a response. Now, whether that will entail talking with Haley and Ward, I would hope it would with your engineer and Haley and Ward to see if any disagreement can be worked out. If not, then that's something we'll discuss further on the 30th, I would think.
Well, if, if time is so valuable, I would like to see the time spent well. So I would encourage both Haley and Ward and the developer to engage in a conversation.
Thank you. That's, your opinion is noted, and your wisdom is very clear on that, I think. And hopefully both sides will, will participate in that, so it's not adversarial in any way, but trying to solve a problem, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to Thank you.
Now, Mr. Johnson, normally we allow public comment. You've talked endlessly on the, about this project.
One quick question. You said, said, there's nothing, no amenities on, on the reason for a sidewalk, there's a indoor temple, there's bike, there's going to be kids living there, there's bicycles riding on the way.
You've made that position clear at every hearing we've had where we've talked about traffic in this project. So we understand that issue, we understand your concerns about that, and they're taking in, being taken into consideration, but the evening is late, we have one more hearing after this one, so tonight, no. But thank you.
Yes, just point of order, I guess, more than anything else. Before you make a motion to continue, I, I believe the applicant said that they had that extension letter available. I do. Why don't, if it's okay with you, can we just accept that while the, the hearing's open and get it on the record now?
That sounds fine.
I have, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. All set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So we have a motion to continue the hearing to September 30th at 7:00 PM? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I think we're
Aye, Ryan Saul, vote in favor.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor. I don't remember if I already voted. If not, I voted twice. It's like Chicago, vote off early and often. Thank you, Israel.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to the next item. It is item number eight on our agenda, continuance of a public hearing involving a special permit request for 17 Central Street. This matter had been on for a hearing on August 26th, but no one appeared. We are pleased that we have the applicant present tonight. Very sorry that it's as late as it is, but as you can see, we've been very, very busy. This is, I will read the notice. The petition is from Ashland House LLC requesting a special permit for Mass General Law, Chapter 4A, Section 10, and Chapter 282, Section 9.3, parentheses, special permits of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant seeks a special permit to build a garage and bedroom over the existing dwelling line while staying within the same footprint. The building and lot are pre-existing non-conforming. The property in question is located at 17 Central Street, Assessors Map 14, Lot 411, in the residential BRB zone. Members of the board, you may recall that this matter was previously on earlier this year, but the applicant at that time was seeking a variance, and it was decided that, or determined that more appropriately should be a special permit for a non-conforming lot as opposed to seeking a variance. And as a result, the applicant was allowed to withdraw without prejudice and refile the application, seeking a special permit, but with the same plans. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't you tell us just a little bit about, about the project, what's being proposed? I know we had the plans previously. They are up on the screen now. Thank you, Jasmine. And tell us what, what you're proposing to do.
Yeah, that's, we want to just add the garage.
And if you could just speak into the microphone and
Yeah.
And give us your name and address first.
Yeah, my name is Claude Waldo Santos, and I live in 233 Main Street, Ashland.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we bought this house with me and my wife, and we just tried to add a garage and a, the bedroom on, on top of the garage. That's the only, but we, you can see, we can follow exactly the same line of the house. We don't go over more, we can do that. And we want to just make a nice, beautiful house on the street.
Okay, so everything is the same, it's just that the lot size is pre-existing non-conforming, and some of the setbacks are pre-existing non-conforming, correct?
Correct, and they are replacing it in the exact same footprint.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Brian?
No, I don't have any questions on that.
I also have architecturals, if you need them.
I'm sorry?
I have architectural plans as well, if you'd like.
Okay, why don't we show those as well on the screen?
A little dark, but
Okay, having seen those, any questions?
No.
Stu? Stu, do you have any questions?
No, I, I think the fact that everything is contained in the same footprint is, is a positive.
And Ryan, how about yourself?
I, it looks to me from the architectural plans that it, it's going to be, you know, there's, there's no increase in height at any portion of the building above the current height for that A in the front. Is that accurate? I don't see the second page with the, with the elevations. My, actually, might be further down. Okay, there it is. Yeah, so no questions for me. It looks like it's, you know, not increasing the height in any substantial manner and, and the footprint, so none for me.
Okay, I have no questions either. How about a motion to close the hearing and enter into deliberations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Do, do we need open for public comment?
Public comment, I'm sorry. Well, there are two members of the public present, and I didn't mean to overlook a select board member, so I may no longer be on the board.
Just one quick question.
If you could just go to the microphone, Joe.
Sorry, sir. Your butters that are around your property, have, have they been advised about, about this, and has there been any concerns from them? That would be the only thing I would ask, to make sure that they're happy with it.
We have not received any
Oh, okay.
any comment
That's fine.
pro or negative about the project.
This is the, the building right now that has the fence around it because of the, the fire that took place in that location? Okay, thank you.
So I think it would be appropriate.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I would note that under Section 3.3.5, Subparagraph C, that in the event the building inspector determines that a non-conforming nature of such a structure would be increased, or there's some change, that the board may, by special permit, allow such reconstruction where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. I guess I would now entertain a motion to close the hearing and enter into deliberations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Okay. And entering into deliberations, seems to me that this meets the requirements of 3.3.5, Subparagraph C, that the reconstruction would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. In fact, it would be an improvement over what is presently there, as it's in a state of disconstruction, if that's a word, I guess. So I would be in favor of granting the special permit request.
I agree, and I move that we grant the special permit request.
And one final note, we do need a third member. Ryan did the last special, the last one, the variance. Stu, you're up, if you would like to be the third voting on this one.
I will, I will cooperate.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, Brian, you made a motion
I did.
to approve the special permit. Aye, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sir, what will happen is Jasmine will write a decision granting the special permit. It'll come back before us on the 30th of September. You do not need to be present. And we will discuss the decision, make sure it's in the proper form, then we'll make, we'll sign it, and Jasmine can tell you what will happen after that. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience this evening.
In the meantime, you can go to the building department and apply for permits. Absolutely. Thank you so much. You as well. Thank you for waiting.
Okay, next item on the agenda, meeting minutes for August 26, 2025. Those were sent out earlier, is a package last, late last week. Jasmine, did you receive any comments from anyone on proposed changes?
I did not.
Okay, does anyone have any proposed changes or comments on the minutes?
I do not.
Doesn't seem like it.
No.
I would then take a, entertain a motion to approve the August 26, 2025
So moved.
minutes. Yes, thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Aye, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
We are all set on that. Okay, item number 10, staff updates and administrative matters.
Only that we will be posting that we have two associate member seats open, so we'll be sharing that with the town manager's newsletter this week, and also posting it on the website. So if anybody is interested in sitting as an associate member for the zoning board of appeals, we would certainly welcome you to submit your talent bank form online, and then we can hold interviews once we receive some applications.
Thank you. That would be, volunteers would be well-accepted, I think.
Yes.
We're, we've been very, very busy this year, and although any new members wouldn't be participating in present matters, they will certainly be helpful going forward. That being said, nothing else to discuss. Anybody else have anything to talk about, that we can talk about?
If you just, we're sort of out of the order, but this is going to be considered to be under
Under old, under new business.
Well, I don't know about new business, but it's a, an administrative matter.
There you go. That, that works for me. And just, quick observation, and I know you folks are under the gun with all these types of meetings and everything. And I've heard in, you know, the past month or so, some people feel that the process is kind of rushed because you, you schedule all these big projects on the same night. Is it possible to put one project at one meeting to hold that so that way you can vet everything that needs to be done? Questions can be asked because the, the process that we're going to be dealing with the 1060 Main Street, with the questions being forwarded to you, that doesn't allow for a follow-up question if the answer is not presented properly. So how would one ask for a follow-up question if you don't have that ability, if you're just reading the questions from, from what has been provided to you folks via email? That's just that observation. And I know we have time to, to do that, to think maybe of a solution or resolution to that. And again, the other thing would be, you know, instead of scheduling all these big projects all at the same time, maybe end with the, with the extension. That way, and I would think that the project people themselves would appreciate that time to be able to do the things they need to do and get the, the proper answer, not the proper answers, but a, a more defined answer than just, oh yeah, we, we have to hurry up and go, and go through it. I mean, I, I just sat back there, and these projects and, and, and the, they're vital to, to what's going to happen to this town down the road. So it, just, just a suggestion, you know, you can tell me to stick in my hat and go sell newspapers, but at the same token, I mean, and these projects are too important for the town not to, not to be given their proper due. Just, just, that's my observation.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I think it's a point well, well-taken. Obviously, with the, the Main Street and the Waverly Street projects, we're under time constraints, so we really have to sort of double up on those. But going forward, what you propose frankly makes some sense, providing a little relief for the board, but also allowing the public to better follow what we're, what we're doing.
Absolutely. And I think they would feel more comfortable with it as well.
Okay, thank you for the
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing, believe me.
Thank you very much.
I know it's not
Appreciate that.
It's not, it used to be fun. I don't know if it's still fun. I didn't think so.
Last year was fun when we didn't have a, a meeting for seven months. Thank you, Joe. That's nice, nice of you to say. Okay, that being said, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Thank you all very much. This sets the record for the longest meeting. Good night. Waka, thank you very much.